All right, it's six o'clock, we'll get started. Uh, we're gonna move right into it, no roll call or any of that. Number three A is awards, presentations and appointments. Uh, I'm gonna stop right there and we have a guest with us tonight. Jonathan was nice enough to drive down. Jonathan Harden, for everybody's information, is the head of CPWS. And we've been working very closely with Jonathan for a number of months about a project to bring the water through Harpeth Valley, Mallory Valley, and to Middle Tennessee through a participation with CPWS. And Jonathan, we can't thank you enough. Uh, y'all remember about this time last year? We went up and spoke with Jonathan because of all the help that they gave us out at the water plant when we had that almost disaster. And uh, they, y'all had people down here for forty-eight hours straight. And I went up to thank them, so it was, it was fantastic. So Jonathan, the glory is yours.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know how you like me to do this. I don't wanna be too formal, but I don't wanna be too informal. Everybody here can hear me and I know most everybody pretty well, but I'll still introduce myself, Jonathan Harden. I've been at Columbia Power and Water Systems for almost a dozen years. Been serving as the president and CEO for two years. I like to tell everybody that before I knew a blessed thing about Columbia Power and Water Systems, I moved to Murray County after being in Middle Tennessee for the better part of thirty years. Moved to Murray County fifteen years ago because I liked it. It reminded me of Northeast Tennessee where I grew up. Um, beautiful area, quiet, it was not Nashville. Um, not like going on. Moved down here, we had a young toddler. Uh, my wife and I, we've had two kids since. And I guess that segues into what I'm here to talk about. It's not as quiet as it was. It's not as slow paced like Elizabeth in Tennessee where I grew up. Um, it's getting busy. And so I tell our employees, when I meet with them, when you're inside the four walls of Columbia Power and Water Systems, you're someone here to provide service, not just our customers, but to the folks that are in our business and have a hard time serving just like we do. You go out there and you be helpful. Uh, when you leave these four walls, you can be community minded. You can speak your mind about what you want this community to look like for your kids when they grow up. There's nothing wrong with that. So we're talking about growth, we're talking about responsible growth, and we're talking about being friends, which we were, now partners, which we are, we will be as long as we possibly can be, uh, partners to responsibly serve growth. Uh, something that I have to draw attention to when I get a chance to go to Nashville like I did last Tuesday, is to educate folks about things that we take for granted. We had a dam on the duck. We had a reservoir that was gonna be built. It was completely built and it was deconstructed. It amazes me that you talk to folks that talk about being born and raised in Tennessee. And I tell this story and they're like, I've never heard this. Well, you need to hear it. We had it, we lost it, and now we're struggling to serve because of that dynamic. You need to know history, you need to know what's behind you in order to drive forward. So we have those history lessons and then we talk to them about, we have things that we can do to serve that wanna be expensive. But you need to know that if you can find a way to help us, you got folks down here who aren't operating in a bubble of self-interest. We're here to be partners. I introduced myself to you and I said, I'm here as Murray County. What I meant by that is forget about the C in CPWS. I'm here as somebody who lives in Murray County that wants to help Murray County. Why? Because I love it. That's why I moved here. Um, the ideas that we have start with something that the Duck River Agency endorsed. And we've worked on for many years. Uh, it's been about ten years that I've worked on it earnestly. It feels like fifty. Uh, and that is trying to responsibly get water out of the duck group. I say responsibly because uh, folks may characterize our attempts as efforts to suck the duck dry, uh, suck the duck dry for growth. That's not the case. The duck can't support it, we don't want it. But if the duck can support it, we want it. And when we're talking about the downstream intake, it also allows us to preserve the integrity of a very important conversation point. We don't need a dump site at Monsanto for a lot of reasons. One of which is, we're gonna responsibly use the duck. That's gonna contaminate our waters. We don't need it, we don't want it, put it somewhere else, stay out of our backyard. The duck is an option. And the option that we're also here to talk about is going to another source. Um, you have before you, I assume Mayor, a feasibility report, a feasibility study and a cost sharing arrangement related to that. It's purely to get smart folks involved to understand, is it feasible to go to Cumberland? And if we bring the water back in a raw or finished form, what would that look like? This is the due diligence that you have to do to make good informed decisions. Um, so we are committed to our share of what is currently proposed as thirty-five million gallons a day of water from the Cumberland. I believe the apportioning of the water has been twelve for Spring Hill, twelve for CPWS. Murray County Water Systems asked for nine NGD, Matt Pleasant has asked for two. Um, that adds up to thirty-five. And so there's a proportioning of the costs based on that request. Uh, those requests, Matt Pleasant certainly is fair and reasonable. I believe the time horizon that they asked for was over twenty years. So that's the type of um, water that we would be looking for from Cumberland. Now, a lot of folks ask me, is Cumberland something that's gonna replace the duck? Well, it's a tricky subject to talk about. I have preached responsible use of the duck the last twenty-four months because when I testified in Nashville for the scenic river designation, I talked about the importance of protecting the duck and protecting a potential water supply source for us. Uh, it's always gonna be on the table to understand what the duck can do. But fast forward into the future where this Cumberland idea or some other source takes shape. And we're able to get water from that source. And we're able to have the kind of growth that we want, that the water brings. That water would inevitably go to sewer, a lot of it. That sewage would be treated, cleaned, made pristine, it actually is. And that treated effluent gets discharged to the duck group. So a downstream intake in a mature uh, two-source uh, program becomes an opportunity to just recycle that water that's discharged to the duck from another source. So a great way to get twenty-five, a great way to get uh, fifty million gallons of water from the Cumberland is get twenty-five out and then recycle it and use it twice. Um, that's the, the basic core tenets of this. Now you ask, isn't that expensive and wouldn't that have a lot of rate payer burden? Yes, and yes. Uh, it is expensive and it would have a lot of rate payer burden. The rate payers don't need the patient. So our conversations with the governor's staff at a state level and then yes, at a federal level has been, we wanna control what comes here. We're not giving up our autonomy to control the type of growth that we have. But if you wanna unlock investment in this area that we agree with, it's gonna cost a lot. And the folks that lost that dam forty years ago, thirty years ago, don't deserve a patient. So we wanna control the growth. If you want the investment here, investment that we agree with, the cost is going to be a lot. And you're gonna have to support that with your dollars. Because our rate payers shouldn't have to bear that burden. Uh, that sounds great. It'll get up there in the sausage world that is Nashville and Washington. And I'll probably get ground to a pulp. Uh, but we can try because if we don't, someone else will. And I believe in the people that I talk to and how much they care that we've never had a better group to try and to work together to make it happen. I told the fellow I'm gonna talk a lot, apparently I'm lying. Um, but I do wanna stand here and say thank you for your partnership with Murray County. Um, I'm always at your service to talk, speak, answer questions, tell you I don't know, but I'll find the answer. There's a lot I don't know. But happy to answer questions, anything you wanna know about these ideas, because they're very much ideas. That's how progress starts, with ideas.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mike, Jonathan, I guess, I guess when we're talking about the Cumberland, but it is coming from, I guess, the Williamsport, is that still on the table?
The, yes. The, the Williamsport idea for an intake on the Duck River is still on the table. Thank you for reminding me that I didn't paint a picture of just how on earth the water comes from Cumberland. Um, Harpeth Valley Utility District in Bell, up in Nashville, already has an intake on Cumberland. They have a treatment plant that is being expanded. They're already planning on expanding the plant to treat more water and send more water to their customers, including Mallory Valley. Um, Mallory Valley and Harpeth Valley have mature infrastructure that water could come to, to a point that's a little bit north of Highway ninety-six. So at a point that we would establish north of Highway ninety-six on Mallory Valley territory, as the crow flies approximately, it would be thirty miles to bring it from there down to the Carter's Creek, Carter's Station area of Murray County. Um, a little bit west of the Alton facility, just to give you a landmark to go by. You're asking me, why on earth would you choose that path? Well, easement acquisition and property acquisition is horrendously expensive. We just bought a piece of property on Polk Lane to potentially have a booster station to help boost our pressure and flow to our friends in Matt Pleasant to be helpful. Uh, going through that acquisition and other acquisitions is reminding me just how crazy it is to buy something around here right now. Um, that path, that thirty miles I described, twenty-five miles of it approximately, is TBA rideaway. They have a large five-hundred line that runs down from Williamson County through Murray County to the northwest corner of our territory. It's a two-hundred foot right of way. They've already done the environmental due diligence on that path to put in this large transmission line. The property owners adjacent to it have already been aggravated by all the stuff that has to go with that being put in. You still have to talk to the property owners. But the expense associated with being in that right of way uh, and the time to do what you need to do. Uh, the time would be abbreviated, saying it'd be quick, but it would be quicker. I'm not saying it'd be cheap, but it would be cheaper to go through the TBA right of way. Is TBA aware of this? Yes, they are. We've been talking to them since uh, the October conference. They've assigned it a right of way specialist. They've been evaluating it for the last four months. So far, they cannot find any deal breakers to this idea. Subject to a feasibility study on what it would look like and what potential impediments could be. Things can happen. But TBA, they've engaged partner. And I don't think it's a coincidence that the governor mentioned TBA specifically in his executive order one oh eight uh, that he issued recently. And then he appropriated a hundred million dollars for planning ideas to protect the duck from bringing water from Murray County. Uh, that executive order one oh eight stipulated a nineteen-person panel to guide water supply decisions in the Duck River watershed. I was honored to be picked to put on that panel. Uh, I don't know who else is on there, but I know I'm one of them. I'm accountable to folks in Murray County, my friends and neighbors, as to what we're gonna try to do. I, I view today as an, an opportunity to base the name, introduce the fact that, you know, I intend to be accountable and I intend to be accountable on behalf of all of us, not just some of us.
Yeah, Mike, I just have one more thing, which I appreciate, you know, what you're doing. And it amazes me, you know, when you're talking about that line going to Williamsport, you know, it's supposed to be a dead straight shot. And when you go down the road, it crosses the road three or four times. I'm sitting there thinking, you know, that's a straight, that's a straight line.
Going to Williamsport to what we refer to as the Church Bluff, Bluff area, Fatty, Fatty Brook Branch down in Greens Mill, down in that particular area where the bend in the river comes, you hit Hickman County, you got the Natchez Trail Bridge and all that. From Columbia going out that way is eighteen-ish miles roughly. Um, and that is still our quickest and most inexpensive option to get water. For the short term, the way I envision it, that's our primary focus. To get what we know we can get without harming the river from that area. Then long-term, get water from another source and use that intake for just recycling the treated effluent discharged to the duck. We're not gonna flood those folks down there with a bunch of discharge from Cumberland. We're not gonna suck it dry, we're just gonna recycle that water. But it's expensive, so when I tell this story to our legislators, our senators and representatives and folks who could carry the banner up to Washington, it's, it's not something we pay for. If you think it's a good idea, uh, our rate payers don't need to, to bear that burden, needs help. And then we need to have some level of control. I know I can be negligent in that regard. I know how industry works and how decisions are made. But to the best part of ability, exercise control over what comes and how our community grows, what we want to see. Make our voices heard. Like I said earlier, that's what I tell our employees all the time. Do your job serving. And then when you walk outside the four walls and you're not a CPWS employee anymore, you're a citizen. Speak your mind about what you want to see, be nice, be kind, be appropriate, respectful. But talk about what you want to see.
Well, it's good to know that, I guess, our growth, which we know, you know, it's coming. Sometimes I think it's gonna come too fast, come on. But uh, but I do appreciate, you know, everything that y'all, that y'all doing. And I'm sure one of these days, I may not say it, but I'm sure this whole Murray County will probably be a metal government someday.
Could be.
With the spray.
Well, the governor on, on his state of the state made the comment that this is the fastest growing area in the United States of America.
We were the fastest growing electric system last year. Uh, we took the work from Gallaudet Utilities. Uh, when I saw the general manager of Gallaudet this week, I said, you can have it back. I don't own it, but we are growing fast.
Well, but again, you know, I thank you for what Columbia Power and Water did for our group. Because if it hadn't been for y'all, I don't know what we might would have done.
Well, let, let me tell you this, you have an awesome group and you know that.
Yes, yes, couldn't ask for better.
There are days where ten guys on our system, uh, and they're twenty hands and twenty feet. You need twenty more hands and twenty more feet. You can have the best and brightest, which we all do. There's just not enough hands to go fix all the stuff. So uh, Matt Pleasant came up and helped us when a F-three, darn near F-four tornado came down Bear Creek Pike and tore us up. Al Kirsten's a fine man, Chief Hays, your mayor, I could go on and on. Good people helping each other out, y'all helped us out, hey? We're just panning back and forth. We're playing a little bit of tennis right now, uh, helping each other and I played all the teams.
Just thankful we're a phone call away from.
Very appreciative of Matt Pleasant, mate. Trust me, uh, we needed y'all, you were there with. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so you talked about the thirty miles and twenty-five miles that's part of TBA, but what is the other five miles?
It'd be brand-new installed mains, subject to easement, property acquisition. It's just if you're dealing with five miles instead of thirty, it helps. Uh, I'm not here to downplay the costs. You've got a downstream intake idea that is in the several hundred million dollar range. I'm pretty soon with construction cost inflation, we're gonna have to round that up to about a half a billion. It's a lot of investment to bring that water back. The Cumberland idea, the feasibility study will help us understand those costs. But it's eye-watering. I remember twelve years ago talking about a seventy million dollar project and I'm like, boy, that's a lot. And now I'm talking about twenty times that. You're talking about one and a half to two billion dollars worth of work between both ideas. Can't pay for that. Uh, those costs are eye-watering because we're in the most unprecedented uh, construction cost inflation uh, that we've seen in quite some time. Um, it's incredible. And um, we have to be together. Uh, nobody can deal with this alone. You gotta band together. It's a pleasure and it's an honor to partner, but it's a necessity as well.
Right.
We have to.
Everybody's, I have a copy of the map.
Okay.
And I'll get you a copy of it.
And then how, how can we help?
We're gonna pass later this afternoon, uh, a cost sharing agreement for this preliminary study and then uh, if you see somebody that's a legislator in Nashville that represents this area, make sure you tug on the area. That would be Kip Capley. Uh, Senator Hensley. Yes, Senator Hensley, and he's behind it pretty strong.
Yes, he is.
He's already told me that, point blank.
I talked to Mr. Capley and Senator Hensley both on Tuesday, talked to Ms. Picky. Uh, met with Senator Jack Johnson, who has the other parts of Williamson County that Senator Hensley doesn't have. Uh, talked to them about the need for their support and they were like, well, what do you need us to do? And I'm like, potentially start talking to the Haggardys and, you know, Senator, don't mean to use last names. Like I know him really well, but the Senator Haggardys and the Senator Blackburns, who can raise awareness at the federal level. A billion dollars at the state level is eye-watering and impossible. At the federal level, what I'm told is it's a rounding there.
Yeah, that's right.
That bothers my mind, that's a heck of a calculator that they're rounding here with a billion dollars. But you get the right audience and the right pulpit and the right forum and the right people involved, they could, yes, you can control uh, what you wanna look like. You know, maybe naive, but I wanna control it. And we can help and here's money that we can proportion to you. And, and it comes purely from what my dad and my granddad says, Wiki will get the grease, grease, so we're all squeak, squeak, squeak.
And Haggerty has an ear.
He usually does. He won't get reelected.
And, and tug on the heartstrings. Uh, these folks uh, got their heart ripped out forty years ago with a dam and a reservoir that never happened. Um, you owe us.
Yeah.
Emotional blackmail is not.
Oh, I love it.
I'm not beyond anything in that regard.
No, me either.
It's the truth, brother.
Not when we need this as badly as we do. Any other questions for John? John, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Very much.
Thank you.
And uh, we'll get this, we'll, Tuesday night, we'll get the cost sharing done. Tonight's just the work session, Tuesday night, we'll get it done. We'll let you know soon as we do.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you, man.
Great to see you. Any talent on this service?
All right.
Keep hanging on, I hope.
See you.
All right, next we're gonna have Officer Todd England and Officer David Sublet sworn in, correct? Then the mayor's appointment for a historic zoning commission. Um, what we are going to be doing there, we've actually wound up with two that we need to do there. Um, one is Chris Urban and he has agreed to continue to serve. And the other will be uh, putting Pam as our city representative on there. Any questions on that one?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, at the last meeting, y'all asked me a question I wasn't prepared to answer, but these are mayor appointments, but they have to be uh, at the consent of the board.
That's correct.
So it's the same process.
Just like we did last month.
Yeah, they're all different, but all three of these are mayor appointment ratified by the board.
That's right. All right, next will be the uh.
Recreation.
Well, now we've got planning commission on here. Because we need to get Pam put back on here because hers expired eleven of twenty-four I've got on here.
Today and tomorrow.
Okay. Then the power system, Ms. Willie. Um, her term coincides with when her election is, so it expired in November of twenty-four. Uh, the power board has asked that she continue to serve. And then the recreation committee, um, Ms. Lori is going to now be the city appointee on the recreation committee. Now, there's one other idea that's not on here and we're not gonna act on it this month, but the communication committee. And that only meets as needed, but when I started looking at the hodgepodge of information we had concerning that, Mike, I think you and I are the only ones left that had anybody that's actually was originally appointed to it. So what we're gonna do and what I would like for you to do is what we did before is each commissioner have two representatives on there. Milton's on there, probably needs to come off. Because you're gonna know what's going on. So what I would ask, and we, we, if you're ready to do this in the month of March, we will do it then. But if we're not, we can put it off another month. I, you know, we talked about, do we even really need it? But with downtown revitalization, some of the things we, now you've heard what you've heard about water, we need to start getting this stuff out. So be thinking about who you would like your representative to be. Two, please. And again, we're not gonna act on that this month.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven twenty-nine, it'll be a public hearing and the final reading uh, for the revenues and expenses of maintaining the city. Shipper, do you think you wanna add to that?
No, I have some changes to the um, budget amendment. Um, we bought the Apple Tree Lot last month, so I do have that in the general fund coming out of fund balance. We had um, when the temperatures were low, Bond Street Fire Hall had a water leak. So we do have claims going to the insurance company, but I have a portion of it coming in the budget amendment now because that was, it's major repairs, almost thirty thousand some dollars, thirty-one thousand dollars in repairs to the actual building and the pipelines and things like that. But got a claim out there for it and PP should reimburse majority of it. Just in the meantime, that budget would look really off. I would have to put that in my final budget amendment anyway. So I just went ahead and took it from fund balance for right now so we can go ahead and process all the bills. But when the insurance comes in, I will have that as part of my final amendment in June. Um, we looked at raises and uh, Philip probably would speak more to it as well, but we looked at all those line items and insurance systems to make sure we had enough money to go ahead and try to do those in the month of April. Um, that's been the month that we've done them in the past, so we're gonna try to stay consistent with that. It would be the last payroll in April that we start. Um, we've looked at four percent for employees um, in the citywide. And we, like I said, we budget our insurance line at a, at a certain access every year just because we don't know what the rates are gonna come back at. And when those rates come back and we absorb a hundred percent of that cost, then the difference that's left from that, I usually am able to use it. Um, so we did have, a rate increase was there, we absorbed the cost and we still had enough left that we can easily do that. Um, and again, we budget that way and we, like department heads like budgeting that way now too. So we do try to have that wiggle room in the budget because we wanna stay competitive around, everybody else around us is doing it, so we've gotta kinda keep doing the same things. Um, that's really the big things. I think that change in the amendment was the damages for the Bond Street, the ratings are in there.
Any questions for Shipper? Already ordinance, or ordinance, ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven thirty. And again, this'll be a final reading as well. And is, this is the rezone of the property on Magnolia Drive from light industrial to high density, which is what it, adjoining property was already rezoned to, correct, Philip?
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions on that? I think we've all heard that one. Monthly report, city manager, wastewater, anything, Philip?
Uh, I'll have a full report, individual package too. And Dale's here to talk a little more about it, but substantial completion on the water plant did not happen in January. They're staying in March now for substantial completion. Um, I think they're getting to toward the end, it's just gonna be another thirty, forty-five days before we get to that substantial completion.
Okay.
We, we need to rename the served plant. We, we need to rename the served plant Murphy's Law.
Murphy's Law, we can't have it as.
Because that's exactly what it is.
Can't have it will.
That can be done.
Let's, please, let's don't do that. It might keep on forever. Gas system will do that on, you know, there probably won't be much on that. Uh, new business resolution twenty twenty-five, resolution entering into a service agreement with C, EC for zone meters.
So this one is the planning grant and you guys remember you passed the sewer side a couple of months back. It was two hundred and eight thousand for each sewer and water uh, width match. I'm not sure, I thought we were ready to go. Uh, this may be pulled and may be put on next month. So for seven zone meters, but I think we're still trying to get those final touches.
Okay.
So maybe pulled.
Okay. And I know Philip sat down and met with all each one of you individually about a lot of this stuff already, so. Um, resolution twenty twenty-five dash five, and this is another in service, professional service agreement with C E C for stormwater utility, and I know we met with each of you on that as well.
I did, so, um, and I'm glad I got to meet with, I don't think I get to set a view very much on it, but for most part, in depth, once you have time to think about it. It's a big decision, but again, this is to study that, to create that ordinance and that user fee. And then you'll have the harder decision making six months, two years from now to implement or not, um. But you don't have time to look at it, or get any questions about it, try to answer them. But I'm glad you come and had time to really dissect that and look into it.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash six, uh, to do payment of residential water meter upgrades for the capital outlay not to exceed one point two million.
So this is the borrowing that we had planned. At, at one point, we had said, you know, we were gonna bundle all of our capital projects for water and sewer to, water together. And, um, when USDA came in last month or so and they said they can do a portion of our skid project as a grant. So we're gonna move forward. We approved the resolution two mo- month or two months ago for USU to do the loan for us for the skid part. Well, this is the smaller portion of the loan that was re- left for us to do upgrades on all residential water meters around the whole city. Our utilities department has been doing meter upgrades as they're going, that way they're, that way we're getting upgrades done and we're not waiting for all of this process to go through. But this will finish off the whole project. Uh, we're gonna bid it out, get one company to probably come in and do the rest of the work for us. Um, but I did an informal bid, I went, uh, talked to M T A S and the controller's office a bit on this because it's a small portion and going to market for something like this, paying for the rating agency, paying for closing costs, paying for financial advisor. Lot of the, a lot of time, Bassbury and Sims being our legal consultants and all of that, that stuff usually ends up being like five, ten thousand and just fees or more, depending on underwriters and everything. Um, so I was reached out to M T A S thinking, is there another way to borrow money that is not gonna cost us twenty, thirty thousand dollars in fees? Um, and they were like, you know, yeah, you can, because I wanted to give business locally if we could with our local banks, because we've done, I've done that before one time at the county. So I was like, there may be a way to do that with our local banks. So I reached out to all of our banks to put in informal bids. Um, they emailed me their rates and stuff, so I'll have all that information for you all and a recommendation of the lowest bid that we received from one of the banks. And then, um, I also reached out to the Tennessee municipal bond fund and surprisingly, one of our local banks was cheaper than even the state bond fund, so.
Cool. Good. Well, here's the other thing, we're gonna have to borrow some money. It's gonna pay itself back.
Just to add to that, um, history, um, and we may have done it, I was hoping here, I can't remember, but we, you guys passed a resolution to issue a bond of about seven million dollars. So with USDA grant and loan, we're looking at about three and this is one point two, so the capacity is after seven, so that's why we went this route. USDA couldn't do those meters, uh, for ten years or twelve years while we ended up doing it.
Twelve years.
But that, but they will pay, if this, the water loss we know we have because of poor meters.
Severedly, we feel like Dale helped me from wrong here, but at least five percent on lost red and used for meters. Not necessarily water gain, but lost red.
But lost revenue.
So they're out there expecting like that.
And this was one of those bigger capital projects that the rate study that we did, that was part of it. You know, that was one of the things what we wanted to do is replace all residential meters. And then, uh, the grant that we have, um, right now, we have a industrial, the industrial meter's already been bid out and everything and we've actually done the bid for the construction on that. So the industrial meters and residential meters, the goal is to be done by next year, hopefully. By twenty twenty-six, we should, and we think we'll see a lot of revenue change from the industrial meters for sure. Um, because that's where those meters haven't been changed in forever either, so.
Okay. All right, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven and resolution to in opposition to House Bill number oh eight five and Senate Bill number oh seven two five. And what these are, Jonathan spoke on it, I think we still probably ought to do it, is, uh, this is a, just a resolution coming from the body, the commission body, in opposition to them. What they're trying to do is put the dump back at Monza.
Okay.
And this is gonna be within the very short distance of the Duck River and it does not need to be there. Period. Exclamation point.
And Murray County already passed this, been what, resolution?
Okay, good. All right, any questions on that? Hydro repair quote?
The mayor commissioners, you'll have in your packet, I've got a, uh, quote for twenty-seven thousand dollars. And you'll have the leak cards from the leak survey in there too. Um, one thing that we looked at on this and I've done some quick math on it, Dale helped me, but if I miss it, but it's a hundred sixty-four thousand gallons a month. Um, yeah, and then nine thousand, no, sorry, two hundred ninety-five thousand gallons a month and almost ten thousand gallons a day leaking out of hydrants. I know that's expensive, but my goal, and I know Dale, we wanna capture every job that we're not doing. We're making it and we're, we're putting it out on the ground, so I think it's, uh, expensive, it needs to be done, they've been being fixed for many years, but asking you to approve that bid for twenty-seven thousand dollars to fix. How many hydrants, Dale?
Thirteen or fourteen.
Thirteen or fourteen.
Give or take.
And it's, here's another one that will pay for itself because of you're not losing that water we are paying to treat.
There, there is one little caveat to that, is that the hydrogen repair could end up being something minor, not a full repair. This is the worst case scenario. So he said, I don't know what you got, so I'm gonna bid it the very high. And then as it comes down, if we find it's a, whatever it may be, washer or whatever, he's gonna reduce it down.
That's even better. All right, East Merchant bid approval.
Mayor Commissioners, we did receive two bids. One, the high bid was six hundred thousand dollars and the other one was right at five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're gonna make a recommendation not to approve that. Um, you can if you want to, we feel like we can swing it, not if you don't go with it. But after talking to staff, uh, the goal was to fix the hole in the road. So if you don't approve it, um, we'll take utilities, we're gonna dig up the street, we're gonna replace the pipe and we're gonna spot paint back over it to fix the road. But like a half million dollars for seven hundred feet of roadway, very expensive. Seven hundred feet.
We got the equipment now with that back truck and everything else, we've got to be able to get a lot of this done, a lot of it.
Because the main concern was.
It was the main concern.
Yes, the hole.
And after evaluating any utilities, we need to play flatter, we need to, a pipe versus sewer. Well, it's not broke, we're gonna need to fix it, but if we was gonna do it all, that's why it's costing so much. Just food for thought, an earth is down. Stormwater, one company was a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The other company was a hundred and twenty-eight. So when we think about that utility moving forward in the future, that takes care of that portion of it. Um, I think our staff will be able to do it, if they're below. We'll see, because we're gonna dig it up, replace the pipe, put the gray in, and then have a company come in and pay over that.
Cool.
Appreciate you thinking about that.
Yep, amen. Arrow Mines, restroom bid.
Did not receive a bid. Uh, I, I support parts for it last night. We'll bid it out one more time. If they, if we don't receive another bid next month, we're gonna bid ourselves. Bid ourselves. Ten to twelve, block building, and we definitely have the talent now, finding the time and, and to be that, get that done, but, yeah.
We're a team.
And a lot of people, and Chipper tell you, a lot of people downloaded the plan.
Yeah, we really, I expected to get more bids on Arrow Mines than I did East Merchant, which was crazy, because we had about six or seven people download the whole packet and we were really surprised that nobody, nobody came through.
You know, that's frustrating for me, because July first, that was one thing to start on. Get in the plan set, get again, get every bid, get it through codes. And then.
ADA and everything.
Get it out, and not gonna be a bid, it's heartening, but, uh, it's gonna happen and we have to do it.
Twenty thirty, Phillip's gonna be out there putting a bath.
All right, uh, utility write-offs?
So this was something, and I mentioned it to the mayor a little bit, one day when he came by the office, we have we, I had to clean up the write-offs for the pro- property taxes when I was first hired. That was a little bit easier fix, because you have to write off every tenth year of your property taxes. That's something every city does. Um, and so those write-offs are brought to you at one point and I was like, here's a giant chunk of write-offs. Didn't affect our books a hundred percent, but I had to write them off and our policies and resolutions say every write-off that we do has to pass through the commission. We have written off utility accounts, but the ones we were bringing to y'all in the past were anything that's fifty dollars and under or anybody had, that had deceased. So we automatically write off those accounts, those lists would come to you all and that was it. There's other write-offs that have been done as audit adjustments in the past. Prior to the auditors that I had, there were no adjustments. Your AR has, your accounts receivable, every month that we run our billing upfront, it has to be written. If people don't pay after ninety days, one eighty days, whatever our processes are, they have to be called, due diligence has to be done, and at some point, they have to be turned over to collection and written off. We were turning them over to collection, but we weren't writing them off our books. So there's one feature in our system that wasn't being used. We knew last year when we got the new auditors in fall of twenty-three, um, or spring of twenty-four almost, that that was going on. But it was such a big project, because it hadn't been done ever, that we had to figure out where is our starting point, where's our stopping point, where do we go where it's the least hit to our books? So we finally came up with a game plan with the auditors, um, and we had been doing enough to not get an audit finding, but it wasn't at the level that my staff and I wanted it to be. They have finally been able to match everything that was turned over to that company, back to our books. It's about sixty some thousand dollars, which if you think in the scheme of about ten or twelve years, not that bad. Um, because one billing, um, is a few hundred thousand dollars for us. So this year, right now, we have been right, like I said, the auditors have given us adjustments, but I'm just gonna bring you a list. This list is gonna be a little, it's gonna be big, it's thirty-six thousand dollars is what this list is. But if you look at the oldest date on that report, I think it was twenty twenty.
It was.
We are in twenty twenty-five, so it's almost five years of write-offs. Of course, the old write-offs have been written off as adjustments, they just were not connected together. But this list has to be approved by you all, so we don't get a finding if an auditor decides that, hey, you all have not followed your own resolution. Um, in March, we are also going to be updating that resolution to actually match what we've been doing, because according to the resolution, we were supposed to be bringing you this list every ninety days. That resolution has not been followed. The resolution was done in two thousand seventeen. I don't think it's ever really been followed properly the way it was written. Because even though we were bringing you fifty dollars and under, maybe, before I started and, and the people that had deceased, we were not bringing you every write-off. Um, so we're trying to get a grip on that, trying to get a grip on our delinquent account, so that we'll, we have a very small amount of, of delinquencies. I'll have a twenty twenty-four number for July through June, uh, July through December for you all. Um, and then that way we can kinda get in more details, but I will have all that in front of you, uh, for Tuesday's meeting. But it's, it's just, that list has to be shown to you all, that way you know, and it's broken down by each utility.
Can you not, um, just going forward, put it in there like in the resolution or whatever? If it's fifty dollars or more, you bring it to us, or a hundred dollars or more, if not, can y'all just do it?
If it's, I could, yeah, we could, we could change it. I mean, I'm sure if you all wanted that, we could put that in a resolution. I haven't showed Cory the resolution or anything yet, but yeah, we could probably.
Why don't you, why don't you, the next, when you and Cory are working on this, everybody.
Because that's gonna be March, yeah.
We'll give her, everybody give them what you think their number is.
Yeah, one hundred fifty, whatever.
I think it ought to be probably two hundred fifty, just to keep the little. I mean, two hundred dollars is nothing anymore, as bad as I had to say that.
I'm just throwing a number out there, just, you know.
That's good.
Yep.
And I guess, my, uh, if I own a business and I'm renting this business out, and I guess the person that I'm renting out, they're not, they didn't pay their gas bill and they closed down.
We start a new account.
You start a new account, so the new, the new.
Owner does not pay the old bill, because it's connected to the person moving the address, yeah. And, um, something else that we're trying to do also is, um, the collection company, you know, we're trying to send delinquent letters out to people. The collection company hasn't really been doing that great of a job. I think we received one payment in twenty twenty-two. And we've turned over sixty thousand dollars and we may have received twenty dollars in, you know, four, four years or three years. So we're trying to work with the collection company to try to be like, if you guys are not gonna do that good of a job, we may switch to another company. But our goal right now is, we had some processes and procedures going on. We collect deposits from every customer and we collect a deposit from every business. There's fixed amounts for residential deposits, but there is calculated amounts based on the number of average of their bills of a previous business that they pay. So if they get a final bill and they don't pay, we have a deposit to apply to it. Now, what they end up owing after that may be in excess of the deposit. There were some processes that we had that were a little backwards, which we changed last year, so we've actually, when I bring you all the amounts, it will make a lot of sense on. I mean, between July and December, we don't have that many accounts that were turned over. It's maybe ten or fifteen accounts. Um, and amount wise, it's a very small amount split between multiple utilities, but I'll have all those numbers for you on, on, on Tuesday. It's just something, because that resolution says that as of now, I have to bring it to you all and because we never fought it before, is the other issue. The old stuff that has been done, because like I said, there's about sixty thousand that's sitting on the books with the agency. Um, I'm only bringing you thirty something. The rest of it's already been turned over and done and I'm like, God, it's already pulled it out, so.
All right. Mallory Valley, Mallory Valley Utility District Cooperation and Cost Sharing Agreement. This is what Jonathan was speaking about during his, uh, time with us, and I think it's right at sixteen thousand for the city of Mount Pleasant.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm glad he explained all that and he talked it very well. But I'll tell you, our portion is twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents.
So we can, when we really spread, split it up, that's what we would make.
Only thing I got to say, that's a lot cheaper than what it would cost us, or what we have spent to ask somebody to find us more.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I agree with you. Between the four entities, we're paying only five percent.
Yeah. And, and understand too, that we are an end user through CPWS. Murray County Water, Spring Hill, CPWS are actually going to be the lion's share of the payers in this, because they are actually going to have towns. Where we are an end user through CPWS versus having to buy tap or trying to run the line from Darks Mill Road, which is where this is going to end, to Mount Pleasant. So this is.
We may not see it.
We, you're right, we may not, but I mean, you got to be.
We gotta be planning for it. We might not see it, but it's.
Maybe our kids goes, okay, friend, Daddy, we got the water.
We got the water. Anybody got anything else?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, go home and watch the twins or what's left of it.